Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Thursday, March 18, 2021. It's 10:32 a.m. My name is Ty Minter, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. Present is Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Wells County Manager Ramiro Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and Economic Development Manager Jenica Machado. We are here to discuss American Rescue Plan Act. Public can follow on our Thurston County YouTube channel or by conference call at 360-252-9020, PIN 1234. We have one hour slated for this discussion, and I'll be asking the county manager to frame the discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Let me walk you through as a matter of background, the purpose of this conversation, and we'll get into the level of details for a potential proposal for you to consider. On March 11, 2021, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 into law. That included a $1.9 trillion package based on the President's American Rescue Plan, which intended to combat the COVID-19 pandemic, including public health and economic impacts. As part of that law, $362 billion in federal fiscal recovery aid to a state and local governments was included. Out of the $362 billion, there were just about $219 billion, $220 billion, is slated to state fiscal fund recovery, which includes all the states as well as the District of Columbia, the Territories, Tribes, as well. Also included, $130 billion, they will be for metropolitan cities, municipalities, and counties. For counties, included a $65.1 billion. And I'm going to go back to that number a little bit. And also, out of the $362 billion, also included local assistance in tribal consistency funds, which includes revenue share for counties and public land of $1.5 billion. And also, you know that as a PILT program, which we broadly see. There is other areas on this, on this federal act, they might be coming to the county through the state, through federal allocations for COVID-19, public health, and any other means and methods. So what I'm going to be focusing today is on the direct allocation the county will be receiving as a result of this act. And that is part of the $65.1 billion that is going to be allocated to counties across the nation. And again, this is going to be a direct allocation for Thurston County, and I'm not going to spend time as to how the formulation was, but the county is expected to receive just about $56 million, and I'm going to call "and change." It's funny, it said $56 million and change, but for the talking purposes, it's going to be a little bit over $56 million, the county, Thurston County, will be receiving. There is two elements that we know for a fact, that this is going to be allocated to Thurston County in two buckets. 50% is going to be allocated to Thurston County, hopefully in the next, say, month. After the US Department of Treasury, the federal has developed specific guidelines as to how we need to spend that. And the other 50%, let's talk about $28 million, and $28 million for talking purposes, and change. So the first $28 million will be coming to the county, let's say, in a month. And the other $28 million will be allocated to the county 12 months after the first allocation is completed. So that will put us into the timeframe of 2022, let's say, April or May, if that is the case. Let me walk you through briefly as to some of the allowable uses. And again, there will still need to wait for a specific guidelines by the US Department of Treasury as to how we can utilize this money to dilute. But this act includes, for instance, the allowable uses of this recovery fund is to respond to or mitigate the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 emergency or its negative impacts, including assistance to household, small businesses, and nonprofits to aid or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. The other allowable bucket or activities is to provide government services to extend, to extent of the reduction in revenue. And that includes an online property or income tax due to the public health emergency. That deals with impacts to the county in terms of lost revenue. It also includes an area where it says make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. State and local governments can transfer funds to a private nonprofit organization, a public benefit corporation, to involve in the transportation of passengers is related to mainly to infrastructure. It also includes another area, the response to workers performing essential work during this pandemic. Now, there's also gutrails on this particular funding. And in the states, some of the gutrails, so those are the areas that we will not be able to use for. And the states, states are not allowed to use the funds to either directly or indirectly offset a reduction in the net tax revenue. What it means that we will not be able to use this money to reduce the current taxation that we have. The next is no funds shall be deposited into a pension fund. Some local jurisdictions may have individual pension funds, they might be in the red, and these funds will not be allowable to use for. And the last area that I'd like to touch is any local government, including counties, the fall, that fail to comply with these guidelines, they'll be subject to repay the funds to the Treasury. So, and again, this act, federal act, is extremely complex. And again, there's going to be money coming to the county. The conversation that I have for you today is for the first $28 million that may be coming to the county in the, in the next few weeks. So in your pocket, I have included somewhat of a roadmap, what I call is a roadmap, and the title is Proposal for American Rescue Plan. Here says county receiving $57 million, that's rough, probably less than 57. In the states, 50% will be received within the 60 days, that's the expectation, just about $28 million, let's say, by June 2021, as I stated, the other $28 million will be received before June 2022. So today's conversation, it will be to introduce a proposal for you to consider as to how the board, the county could allocate the first $28 million. So walking through, staff suggestions for you to consider investing $10 million in Thurston Strong for business economic recovery. Out of the $10 million, suggested that perhaps set aside $3 million for minority-owned businesses, $2 million for farmer-owned businesses, and $5 million for other business recovery. And I want to walk you through some of the specifics that perhaps Thurston Strong could do that. Out of the $28 million, the staff is proposing for you to set aside to purchase a motel to serve the immediate need of isolation and quarantine, and also to look into the future to provide transitional housing for a homeless population. Either this is an action by the county solely, or perhaps in coordination with a particular jurisdiction here. Another $5 million is for you to set aside to infrastructure expenditures. Now, Jenica is working on looking for ways to incorporate a broadband program here in the county. She has some initial conversations. The suggestion is for you to set aside $1 million for future projects related to broadband, and $4 million as an example to do water and sewer utilities. As you may know, as an example, Tamashan and Beverly Beach, those are the two utilities that we have, and their dire need to replace the current infrastructure. Those are buckets that I'm just walking you through. The remainder, $8 million, we are planning to ask for reimbursement of 2020 past expenditures. As you may recall, we were able to claim under the CRF funding in 2020, past expenditures for corrections. There is an opportunity to go back into 2020 expenditures and claim that for reimbursement. That will create $8 million that will come into the general fund, which creates an opportunity. And I will walk you through what those opportunities the board may have moving forward. So I will stop there and first hear the first reaction. And when you're ready, I can walk you through the next piece of information that I have included in your pocket, and that dives into a little more detail as to what Thurston Strong can probably do with, if the board decides to invest on it with $10 million.
Okay, so do you want to then delay specific questions about Thurston Strong's piece for the next segment?
If you like, I can just go through the details of Thurston Strong, yeah.
Why don't you just go ahead and do that, and then we can hit questions.
Sounds good. So I touched to, so Jenica, I asked Jenica to coordinate at a high level what Thurston Strong could do with this investment of $10 million that can help our community. And I have provided to you, the Thurston Strong proposes Thurston Works Job Program with about $2.2 million. They will include just about 50 employees, they will be trained and hired as a result of this investment. And this is part of the recovery plan that Thurston Strong has already laid out. And this is important because it's not just about the economic recovery for businesses, but also making sure that we have the workforce behind it to support that recovery. And that's the proposal. Also, $2.2 million, they will issue just about 200 grants for just about $10,000 each, and that will be for businesses they may be in need. They're planning to set aside $3.3 million for minority business investments. It will include just about grants for $10,000, as well as infusing support for new minority business advisory council, staff to manage the support council, and help launch a community cultural center. And each one of those, obviously, they need administrative costs to manage those. Then, related to the farming set aside, they're proposing to have a COMB grant capacity building expanded market access as eligible, about $2 million. They're proposing $200,000 in marketing promotion events and other activities to stimulate the business patronage. And lastly, $100,000 to focus and connect in high school students to career training via the FAPSA targeted outreach. So, and again, this is a high-level proposal that I believe is going to be helpful for you to see if the board is, decides to invest on Thurston Strong at the level of staff is proposing to you.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Mejia.
So my first question is in regard to the broadband. I would like to know more about that, the future projects that are planned.
Yeah, and at this point, we don't have a specific project because we're just having, start having the conversations. For instance, and Jenica can elaborate on this, we have already started conversations with the Pualup tribe. The Pualup tribe is embarking on a broadband project. Whether there is an opportunity for us to partner with the Pualup tribe to enhance and expand their project into the rural areas.
Could I interrupt, please?
Yes.
You said Pualup.
I'm sorry, Nisqually, Nisqually.
Nisqually, okay.
Okay, good enough, thank you.
Thank you, Nisqually. Thank you, thank you for the corrections. I'm just getting it rolling here.
Oh, okay, good.
The Nisqually tribe, and they have already developed in this broadband project, and there's perhaps an interest to, you know, expand that into rural areas of the county. And this is an opportunity to get to a point, if the opportunity arises, to either support that program or be part of a partnership with the Nisqually tribe, perhaps the Public Utility District Thurston County, they also are looking to enhance that program. There is a legislation right now that perhaps allows for PUDs as well as counties to create a broadband utility. There's a lot of nuances on that, at least from my perspective. Some of the requirements of the new law, the legislators considering have a clause that perhaps, as long as there is a non-compete clause, the counties can form those utilities, that creates a little bit of an issue. Because obviously Comcast and the major providers of broadband, of high-speed internet may be part of that. So there's a lot of details. So at this point, this is just buckets for you to consider. They really, the details of it are yet to come.
Thank you. My second question is in relation to the Phase Two for Thurston Strong. Looking at the cuts, I think it all looks really good, but if we are to go with this, at the end, for me, I would like to see basically kind of like a breakdown of how much each business received. Just because in the general concept, I feel like it's always good to know, in case we're asked specifically, you know, to have the data if it's more rural businesses are needing help, or if it's more in the Olympia, Lacey, Tamwater areas. I would like to see a breakdown specifically in which businesses we're helping throughout the area. But the breakdown seems good to me, just in the general sense, but later on, I would like to see more of a breakdown on how Thurston Strong really helped.
Yeah, certainly. And that is our own point, because at some point, we need to come back to the board. And if this is the direction the board likes, like to go, is to, you know, bring you a report as to how that investment has helped the community specifically, in what business, what non-business, and how they have been able to, you know, really help on the recovery. There is, just like, they also, Thurston Strong is working with the other jurisdictions here in the county to also support some of this strategy. So, and I believe they're also working with the cities to see how they can support as part of this, this rescue plan from the federal government, which the cities will also be receiving a direct allocation.
Do you know what that allocation is going to be for Limpulasee and Tamwater, for example?
I don't have that in front of me, but I know that overall, just to give an example, I talked about the $65.1 billion is a direct allocation to counties, country, in the country. The cities will have, is just about $45.57 billion. So they're going to get a significant amount. But I can give you the specific allocations to the cities later on.
Well, following up on Commissioner Mejia's questioning, I don't think we can make proper decisions on that $10 million to Thurston Strong until we know what the other jurisdictions are getting, and at least get some sense if they've got something going on. Because I think possibly our obligation is going to be to the unincorporated area of Thurston County. And so we might adjust those numbers accordingly. So the quicker we can get that information, I think we can make better decisions. I would like to see how many, well, and this goes back to, are we doing municipal-type activity as well as unincorporated? And how many minority-owned businesses are in the county? And compared to what? So, non-minority-owned, women-owned, I don't know where we're going to draw the line on that, but we need to know some of that information before we make these allocations, I think.
So let me answer the first question. I can give you the allocation the cities will receive, but I cannot give you information as to how they're going to be distributing the money.
No, I realize that. We're not going to know that right away.
Yeah.
But there's some business information that we can find out, that there's, there's 10% minority-owned businesses, or 40%. I don't know. I have no idea. But I do think that is the kind of crucial information that the EDC might be able to help us with right off the bat.
Right, we can, we can see if, and Jenica may be able to chime in and here. And also, just to remind the board, that when the board invested on Thurston Strong, it was a decision by the board not to limit the investment to unincorporated areas of the county. The board made the determination, the federal aid should apply to all county residents, including businesses. So, and this proposal before you is following that assumption as well.
Well, we might want to rethink that if we find out that they've made, you know, they got twice as much as we did, or whatever. I'm just saying, it would be nice to know some of those facts. So we're making policy decisions with all the information available, not just some of that information. Well, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Otherwise, I like the idea of what you've got roughly laid out here. I do have a question about, you know, we're doing a study right now about the Tamashan and Beverly Beach issue. I think we're lumping that in with Boston Harbor and Grand Mound. And so I don't know what that's going to come out with. One of the nice things about working with the tribe on this broadband thing is the county has been trying to solve this problem for one cell tower out off of Vale Road, that's taken five years now, and it's not up and running yet. The tower is now constructed, but it hasn't been put online yet. And with the Nisqually tribe, they don't seem to have that same bureaucratic delay that the rest of us have. So it'd be a great partnership, I think, to get going with those folks and see what we could come up with on a quick solution, if possible.
So I just got online, and Olympia will be receiving $10 million.
Is that $10 million total, or $10 million in the first half?
Total.
Total? Okay.
They may have 50% the same. So let me get you to... Lacey will receive $11,400. Tamwater. $5 million, $5.2 million. And Yelm, $2 million.
Jenica, I have a couple of questions, but I don't, Ramiro alluded to you a couple of times. Did you have anything you wanted to add on what Commissioner Mejia and Commissioner Edwards have said?
Yeah, so I think in regards towards the understanding, the scope of minority-owned businesses within Thurston County, we have had discussion on that. And I think they're still working to understand in total how many businesses there are, and it's been problematic to find estimates on that. But we, looking at the data from the Phase One that we did, we had 300 minority-owned businesses that applied for and were given grants. And so that gave us our estimate of what it would look like to fully fund minority-owned business grants again. And so we see a $2.9 million with 290 grants, knowing, with an understanding that other jurisdictions will also be putting funds towards some of these causes. And so we expect that we would be able to fully fund the demand in that category again.
Robin?
No, I would just say that if we wanted to count the number of minority businesses who are registered with the Washington State Office of Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprises, that should be a number we could easily get.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mejia.
I'm sorry. I know you have questions to ask. I just had a question in regards to the 10% grant admin fees that we see on there, and how those are calculated.
The 10% that you see on those is the staff who is going to be working and issuing and processing their grants. So they're...
Is a de minimis amount that's allowed in many federal grants, just a flat 10% for administration. That is not at all uncommon in federal awards. However, I will say that both the coronavirus relief funds and the emergency rental assistance program funds that we have recently received from the federal government prohibit the use for administrative costs. So we'll have to make sure that once we get the guidelines, we can actually bill these costs through the federal award.
Because the...
And I think I would just... Sorry. I just wanted to know, Robin, your... Um, I just wanted to know, uh, Robin, your, your, uh, mention about the, um, WMBA. Uh, it, we, we looked at that and there was some hesitation to use those numbers. Um, with the understanding that not, we, not all of these minority owned businesses are signing up through the state. And so we think that that might not provide, um, a comprehensive.
Yeah, and that's probably a challenge because no every business checks the box. To be a minority owned business. So that becomes a little bit of a challenge. To get a, you know, the, a whole data on it, but we'll look into it, what we can do.
Okay, um, so one question I have is about the. Kind of what you envision for. A timeline and then how. How locked in our decisions are. Per- pursuant to that timeline, so obviously if we. Shuttle ten million dollars to Thurston Strong, then that's where that money went, but if we. Create a bucket for, for example, four million dollars for water and sewer utilities. Or let's just say five million dollars for infrastructure expenditures. Those projects obviously aren't gonna start tomorrow. And if we see other needs or have new ideas. Are we locked into decide, like what, by what timeline would we be locked into decisions and unable to ship money to? A new priority that might rear its head in. Late May or mid, or mid-July?
So let, let me, uh, uh, address the, um, the federal, uh, act. Expect the, all the allocation should be spent by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. So that is the deadline in which all these funds needs to be spent. This proposal before you. It's just, it give a, give you an indication as to how you would like to consider, uh, those buckets. You are not locked in. Uh, if you see an, a, a rising need, obviously you can reassess your priorities. The only one that perhaps may not be fit in that category is, uh, Thurston Strong. Because if, if, if you decide to allocate ten or whatever other figure. Then they need to have that umbrella as to how they need to work and continue to implement the program. The rest is, is, is really, is, is a suggestion from staff for you to start setting those buckets with the intended purpose. But if something materializes, uh, down the road, the board absolutely has the latitude. To do anything within the guidelines they were gonna be receiving, obviously, yeah.
I want you to know, on Thurston Strong Phase Two sheet, did, I didn't quite understand, did Thurston Strong come up with this proposal? Or is this like Jenica's? Or, uh. Musing about what possibly we could do with this, um, knowing what, how Thurston Strong operates, I mean, who, who dialed up these categories?
So, um. Just a little history, uh, last Friday I had a conversation with Jenica and said, you know, Jenica. Gonna have a conversation with the board next Tuesday. And this is my proposal, they are gonna be presented to the board. It will be great to hear from Thurston Strong as to what they can do with the, uh, the potential ten million. So Jenica worked with Thurston Strong. To get this in front of you. Because I, I was concerned that if, if I come and hear it said ten million dollars for Thurston Strong. It will be many, many questions. And hopefully this will, uh, uh, reduce the number of questions you have, but Jenica has more history on, on the last week.
Thank you, Romero, yes, um, I worked with Thurston Strong to coordinate, um. These numbers and these initiatives, and so, um, this is very much put forward by the group.
Jenica, so, I, maybe you have a perspective on this, I. You know, I'm comfortable with kind of the buckets that are here, but. I've always been. I've always been a little bit concerned as we've gone through this past year, um, and the economic impacts. Have, you know, this is obviously stretched way beyond what we thought in terms of time. And, um. I'm worried about kind of a no business left behind type of mentality. You know, the businesses that were, are completely shut down. You know, a bar, um, a, a, an entertainment venue. Uh, uh, a music school, I, I mean, I don't know what those categories are. They're not just bars, but bars is the one that, that top of my mind because they haven't been able to open, um, a- at all. And whether it's commercial real estate, you know, I, uh, you know, we have rent assistance, but it's for individuals. Landlords were able to access that, but my understanding was it really didn't extend to commercial properties. A lot of the businesses would, are, I've been just stacking up rent, like, I don't know the answer, but I just feel like. With this new, with, we're still, it's a year into it, we're still in the middle of the pandemic. Commer- as far as I understand, commercial rents are just stacking up for businesses that haven't, and some of them haven't been able to open. At twenty-five percent capacity or fifty percent capacity or anything. So I'm just wondering how we meet that gap, I just wanna make sure that doesn't get missed, because. And maybe it's covered in some way that I'm not seeing, but. I, I just feel like there are businesses, and I've heard from a few, um, you know, in the community that. You know, they're, they're still out there hoping that. They don't get evicted once, you know, the economy opens and the commercial landlords are able to collect all that back rent, but. I just don't want a whole stratum of businesses to just evaporate because we didn't think about that in, in these buckets. So I don't know exactly how it would look, i- is Thurston Strong talked about that, making sure every business type prioritizing businesses that have been. The most impacted in the sense that they haven't been able to operate at all or, or minimally?
Right, so, um, in the Thurston Business Relaunch Grant and the Minority Business Investment Grant. Portion, that's, um, about five point four million dollars that are ten thousand dollar grants. And those are going to the type of businesses that you're alluding to. That's hitting arts, venues, restaurants, personal services. That's looking at which industries are most impacted and making sure that they have, um. A priority consideration for these ten thousand dollar grants. And, um, they're also, you know. The EDC and their hotline is they're connecting, uh, businesses, like you've mentioned, venues with the shuttered venue grants. They're helping connect, um, organizations with the PPP loans. And so, uh, it's not just. The portion of the grants we're putting out, but also making sure that we're that connecting piece, um, to other federal aid.
Is two hundred, um, I mean, is that number just? Is that gonna meet the need when we say two hundred grants at ten thousand dollars? Should it be three hundred at twenty thousand dollars or, you know, I mean, is that just? Is that number just plugged in because that was the money left out of the ten million, or is that a, a guesstimation of what, of, of meeting, fully meeting the need there?
Well, I think that you, there are more than. Two hundred businesses in Thurston County, um, and so, you know, I wouldn't want to say that. There is not additional need out there, but, um, these were the best figures given the funding constraints.
Okay, and then when it says targeted sectors TBD, that's what you're talking about, that. That can be targeted toward those that have been shuttered.
Mm-hmm, right, as, um, restrictions and the situation continues to evolve, we wanted to leave some flexibility that it's most responsive to the current conditions.
Romero?
Uh, you, uh, just for the view in public, you mentioned rental assistance and utility assistance. Um, just for the view in public, this proposal before you does not include that aspect the citizens need help with. Because the board has already allocated through other means. Over twenty million dollars to the Community Action Council, uh, to help, uh, uh, individuals with rental assistance while it's utility assistance. Just going to make, since you mentioned rental assistance. This proposal doesn't include that because the board already has taken actions to address that. In the, or, in the magnitude of just about, uh, twenty million dollars, uh, with the Community Action Council.
Cause we got another targeted source of money for that purpose.
That, that is correct, and, and, and as part of this federal money may become even more. Uh, the, another decision, uh, uh, might be coming your way, so. Uh, this is just the direct allocation that is coming to the county, the conversation is focusing on. As I mentioned at the beginning, there may be other fundings that are related to this federal act, they may be coming through the state. They, they, uh, and we just have to see how that is coming and how much money will come. They may have total different restrictions, uh, as well, so.
Thank you, Robin.
This seems to be a, a good place to interject, um, the, the caveat to all of this. And that is that this money must be spent on, um. Covid nineteen response related activities. So, um, targeting it to businesses that were shuttered and are suffering as a result of the pandemic. Absolutely easy to tie to pandemic response and clearly an eligible cost of this money. Um, I think that it's going to be absolutely essential that we continue to be able to do that. As we spend this fifty-six million and change. Um, otherwise, we will be subject to that caveat that we have to pay it back. So it's got to be pandemic related regardless of what we do with it.
Coming to circle back to Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Edwards, did you have your hand up?
Yes, uh. Maybe a follow-up there with Robin. So we're gonna try and keep track of everything that we can. And benefit the most we can as this process goes on. In many of our county funds, we do what's called a sweep. When it comes to interest issues and, uh, then dedicate that money to a certain area. Are we going to be able to do a sweep on some of these funds? When we're holding them to be spent? And if we are able to do that. Would it make more sense to allocate the money out incrementally? So that we had a sweep benefit. But making sure that whomever we're allocating it out to gets it, I don't wanna create a. A bureaucratic nightmare that makes it harder for, say, uh, Thurston Strong or the EDC or whomever. Uh, to get the money and, and make it work, but if we're going to receive a benefit. Rather than give up ten million all at one time, for an example. For, uh, one year or whatever it's going to be. Uh, we might wanna hang on to that and give it out in two, two million dollar increments, I'm just asking that question.
Right, right, have it sit in our bank account growing.
That's right.
So, so there's a couple, uh, responses to that, uh, the first is that. We're going to have to see the Treasury Guidelines.
Okay.
Different, different federal revenue streams have different rules about, um, interest bearing. Very few federal awards come, uh, upfront the way this one will, so usually you're claiming a reimbursement. And that's not an issue. But other funds that I'm aware of that come as a upfront block grant. Prohibit you from using interest in a sweep kind of a way. You have to reinvest any earned interest into the program that's funded. So we'll have to see what the guidelines say. Second, um. I anticipate that we will set up these payments to our nonprofits as a reimbursement basis. So it will sit in our bank account until Thurston Strong spends and claims the money. Um, we know that in our rental assistance program, the nonprofits that we're working with. Can't afford to upfront that much money, so we're going to pay them on a weekly basis. Um, with, uh, up to, I think we determined up to two weeks in advance would be the maximum. But, but it is on a reimbursement as they spend and I anticipate doing the same thing with Thurston Strong.
And, and.
I would hope that if, uh, this causes you additional. Considerable additional work, that we might have to put another position, uh, in there to make sure this happens that way.
I, I have already talked to Romero about needing another accountant to manage these grants and payments and, uh, have. A conversation coming up with Mary Hall about putting that accountant in her. Organization.
Uh, yeah, we talked about temporary position, but, uh, to go back to the reimbursement basis, that's how we. We managed the, the CRF funding in two thousand and twenty. So there was not, it was not a, a payment upfront to any organization, it was on the reimbursement basis. We need to make sure that we put that, uh, check and balances on that, so. And this is, is gonna be on the same, on, on the same parameters. So it, it was just give, uh, an umbrella of, of, of expenditures to Thurston, Thurston Strong, but we're not gonna be shifting ten million. Now it's gonna be on the reimbursable basis.
We'll also be reporting regularly to US Treasury, the bill.
Right.
Has, uh, reporting requirements built in.
Thank you.
Does this, the five million infrastructure bucket, Romero, does it have? Like, for example, if we're looking at Tam O Shan and Beverly Beach, does that have? Applicability to covid nineteen, I mean, you, are you arguing that fifth within the guideline, or is that a?
So I just go back to the, um. The, some of the allowable uses that I described to you, and one of them is provide, um. Uh, this, this is make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. That is really at, at a very high level that I.
I'm just looking at the page.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's page five of the attachment.
Okay.
So that is really the, the, the high level, uh, uh, information that I have for you. And hopefully the Treasury Guidelines will give us an indication as to, you know, what other parameters will be, that's. At this point, that's, that's probably the high level description that I have for you.
Well, that's what they say, that's what they say, we'll take a look for sure.
Yeah, whether, and this is, that's what provides an example, whether the Tam O Shan and Beverly Beach meet the, the criteria. Upcoming criteria by the Treasury is, is a different conversation, right? Uh, but it's, it's just the intent, uh, 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 or trying just to put buckets on the intent of, 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 of this, uh, federal fund.
Okay, is there another top, we have fifteen minutes, is there another piece of this to cover, or are, are we just? This was what you wanted to cover for today?
I have another piece, but, um.
Okay, go for it.
Have any additional questions so far?
I think we should go to the second piece, and then if there's any time at the end, we'll.
So, uh, the, the, the next piece is the five million purchased motel, and as you may recall, that was probably one of the. Uh, the proposals last year, uh, related to the coronavirus relief fund. But that had, had, uh, very many restrictions. Uh, I believe there is an opportunity in here, uh, to invest in that. And again, it will be to serve as a nice solution and quarantine, uh, uh, for the upcoming months. And then it will be an asset. We have to see the, the guidelines again, whether that is, uh, provides additional flexibility. But again, this is just a potential bucket. We talked about the five million dollars infrastructure, now the eight million dollars of reimbursement. I believe there is that capacity to go back in two thousand and twenty and, and, and claim for past expenditures. And that, because this bill includes past expenditures. It goes back to, I believe, March of two thousand and twenty, when the pandemic, when the emergency was declared. So it's a retroactive, uh, element to this new act that we can probably. Claim for past expenditures that we couldn't claim, uh, uh, as a result of the coronavirus relief fund. With this strategy, what it does is come as, as part of you and the fund balance and the general fund. Which then creates much more flexibility for the board to make a more impactful decision. That applies countywide. As an example. The, the, the plan that I, uh, showed to you in related to space needs. This could be a, a, an opportunity for the board to consider how you can use that to, if that is the direction the board likes to go. So is this just an example as to how you can utilize that? Anyways, keep in mind what, uh, Robin has stated early in the previous session. That we don't wanna bump into the, 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 the high limit. Uh, the end of fund balance of, uh, uh, of fifty million, so there has to be an expenditure plan behind it.
So, so like another piece of this could be like the courts that we.
Exactly.
Contracted.
Yeah, it could be the courts, it could be you can probably invest on, on supporting the backlog of, as a result of the Blake case. Uh, there is really, uh, there is really that flexibility the board has on, on, on the eight million dollars, and that was really the intent. I believe of this proposal is to hopefully find a way as to how we can, uh, provide, uh, flexibility. I believe there is a, uh, if, if. And Robin can elaborate a little bit more on this, in terms of lost revenue, if you look at us overall. We may not be able to. In terms of lost revenue, if you look at us overall, we may not be able to make that assessment. You know, sales tax are up. But if we go by line item by line item, I think there is an opportunity for us to claim loss in revenue. Gas tax and the property tax, maybe some of the areas that we could probably look as a potential loss of revenue.
So court fees.
Court fees, all that, yeah.
Courts. There's, there's things that we can claim that were lost.
So the bottom line, I believe, there is enough elements that we can claim the $8 million that we can bring back to you as a flexible spending opportunity for the board. By the way, I'm not expecting you to jump up and down and say, whoo, this is a brilliant plan. No, no, no. This is just introduction to the concept. Hear your feedback. I'm hearing that you'd like to hear additional information related to minority owned business data. We're going to look up to see what else we can do. But I'd just like to hear your first reaction to this, to this plan. And at some point, we'll get the guidance from Treasury. We're going to look into a little more detail of that. And the recommendation may change based on what we find out. But this is the first conversation related to the funding that is coming to the county.
I mean, I'm personally comfortable with this as a kind of a starting point template, given that we can make shifts and we can listen to the community. We can find out maybe a little bit more what other jurisdictions are planning. I don't want to duplicate, you know, if Olympia is launching a huge minority business program, then maybe, you know, that's something to take into consideration or something, you know. But I think the challenge with all of this is just how to, how to balance these, these potentially one-time infusions of resources, not get ourselves locked into things that aren't sustainable over the long term. Because that's going to be tempting to do, to want to do. But I know that you guys are mindful of that because we've had discussions on and offline about it. So that's just going to be something for the board to balance.
That is an excellent point, Commissioner, because although there's a one-time infusion of money, they can probably, you may consider doing a one-time investment. I will strongly encourage the board not to do an ongoing decisions that we're going to be suffering the consequences two, three, four years down the road.
Yeah, especially with the incremental budgeting principle we discussed last hour. That can be a very dangerous situation. Okay, we've got eight minutes left. Do Commissioners have any final comments about this as a template for an approach or?
I like the general idea of what has been proposed. I really like the fact that we're including minority owned businesses to this. And I think, you know, it really goes in line with, you know, the proclamation that we just passed as well. So I think this is a good step and a good direction to be heading in. Definitely putting action behind those words. And so I'm curious to see what the other jurisdictions are doing though, just in the long term and see how that's going to shift. And I'm curious to see what other counties are going to be doing with those funds. And so any information you can get on that, I would appreciate just to kind of see the direction that everyone is heading in.
Yeah, Commissioner Mejia, I believe you will be attending the meeting with the mayors tomorrow at noon.
Yeah, yes.
I was going to be attending that.
Okay, so Commissioner Messer, so you're off the hook, Commissioner Mejia. Commissioner Messer, and I have added this to the conversation. Just to begin the conversation at regional level, so that is part of the agenda tomorrow, Commissioner Messer.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to, usually I have, I do have LSC, but I wanted to, I wanted to be one of these meetings. So I'm going to skip out early on LSC.
I have one other issue.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Some businesses have actually went out of business. So is this going to be able to assist them? Maybe to get out of debt from, that they incurred before they went out of business? Or to reopen their business? I mean, are, what, what kind of guardrails are there on this expenditure? Do you know that off the top of your head? Because I know of some businesses that went out. I don't know if they were planning on coming back or not. I would hope they do. But if, if they went too far in the hole, they might not be able to make it. You know, based on this little bit of help that we're giving them, maybe it just isn't enough. So how does that work? Do you know the answer to that, anybody?
Jenica, why don't you talk?
Jenica, maybe.
The Business Relaunch Grant, I think, is aimed at that, right? But it may be that we need more resources there. But go ahead and answer that if you can.
I think that the way, the specifics and details of how this will be distributed and implemented will really also depend on the guidelines that we receive on the funds from Treasury. So I think that those types of details are something that we can work out later.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we'll, Commissioner will come back after we get a more clear understanding of the time in which they kind of will be receiving the direct allocation and also when we receive additional guidance from the U.S. Treasury. And then we'll, either we revise this proposal before you. If nothing's changed, then at some point, we'll ask you to give us a list, a little bit of guidance, whether we should continue to implement this proposal. But nothing today, so I appreciate it.
Okay, well, if there's nothing further, we can adjourn. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.